Yep.
I would like to call to order the Monday, September 12th regular meeting of the Farber School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here.
Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. No citizens input tonight?
No, Mayor.
Recognition awards. We do have a few recognition awards tonight. You want to help us with superintendent parts? We should all go down the front there?
Mm-hmm.
So tonight, it's with great pleasure that we actually honor two of our own. Darfy High School and Cindy Sylvia, who is the director of the CET program at Darfy, are being recognized and Carlton Maderas are being recognized by the governor. I have a citation here for them from the governor as well as a recognition award from us for the great work that they did in obtaining the largest grant in CTE program. So I will read what the citation says. This is for Darfy, so Matt Damaris, Principal Damaris, is here. And certainly, Matt, you can come down and receive this. And it says, "On behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of receiving the Massachusetts Capital Skills Grant for the Construction Craft Laborer Program to build upon education and training for students interested in all areas of construction fields." This 31st day of August in the year 2022. So, Mr. Damaris, congratulations. And the other citation is for Ms. Sylvia. Carlton, you can just wait right there because we're going to call your name, okay? So, Ms. Sylvia, "On behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your efforts to secure the Massachusetts Capital Skills Grant for the Construction Craft Laborer Program at BMC Darfy High School to build upon education and training for students interested in all areas of the construction field on this 31st day of August in the year 2022." So, we also have our own school committee special recognition award. So Carlton Maderas is the Construction Craft Labor Instructor here at Darfy. And in recognition of receiving the governor's citation for his hard work in partnering in writing the Capital Skills Grant awarded to Darfy High School, we honor Carlton Maderas. And to Cynthia Sylvia, CTE Director, in recognition of her receiving the governor's citation for her hard work, knowledge, and experience in writing the Capital Skills Grant for BMC Darfy High School, congratulations.
On we go. Item number four, super, I'm sorry, subcommittee updates. Do we have any subcommittee updates tonight?
No.
Hearing none. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Ponce.
Yes, good evening. So today, we have an enrollment update, although I will say that these numbers are fluctuating daily. So I'm going to say, as of this morning, we have numbers, but they will change. We have a healthy enrollment. We are up to 10,700, more or less, students. I expect those numbers to go down slightly because, as you know, first few weeks of school, what we do is we are chasing the students who have not reported yet. Some of them may have transferred to other districts, so we're tracking those numbers. And we will have adjusted numbers. But right now, our kindergarten numbers look very healthy, healthier than last year. And our numbers are over 10,700. But I would say that's not accurate numbers. We will make sure that each day, we look at it and we'll make sure we get updated numbers. We also have a hiring update. Just this past week, as you know, I've been updating you weekly in the Friday email, but this past week, we hired 11 teachers, 10 paraprofessionals, six support staff, and three folks in the Facilities Operations Department, for a total of 30 new hires. We currently still have 40 open positions, although some of those, some people, they're still posted as open because until they're completely processed, that posting does not come down. So, and I will say that, just like the national trend, special needs and ESL are two critical areas that we are struggling to fill, I will commend our principals for and their teams who are creating backup plans to make sure that classes are, there are adults in front of students, but we are continuing to process and hire every single day. And a COVID update. Just Nurse Long, we shared with families, no longer is quarantine required for recommended or recommended for staff or children regardless of vaccination status if they have no symptoms, right? All exposed individuals can come to school, they can attend school, as long as they remain without symptoms. Mask wearing, as you know, is optional, but if you are exposed, you're asked to wear, you're required to wear a mask for 10 days, whether you have symptoms or not. If a student or staff tests positive, they're required to isolate for five days, and then they can return to school if they have no symptoms, are fever-free, with the mask. And, you know, otherwise, there's no more test and stay, is not required. We don't have the measures of the at-home testing or any of that. None of that is required at this time. So, thank you, Nurse Long and her staff for putting together. We posted these in languages up on our website for families. And we'll continue to, obviously, we will continue to monitor because we need to make sure that we are safe for adults as well as our students. And that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions for Superintendent? Mr. Aguirre?
When you do the enrollment, could you please get us an update on the Darfy after doc?
Which one?
The one that we were, like, in the past, we were trying to get him in by October 1 to be counted.
The one for the Diamond Partnership? I will tell you that we have withdrawn from that. I don't think that we've recruited anybody for that this year because we would have to reapply. And we did not, Diamond, we did not reapply with them this year because we couldn't, we couldn't, they couldn't staff last year.
My look of amazement is just that, if I didn't ask that, we wouldn't have known, that's all. But the only reason I was asking is we had controversy over the October 1 getting the, you know, extra money. That's the only reason why I asked. Thank you, I yield.
And I will say, Mr. Aguirre, the minute you asked that question, I said that, yes. It should have been informed the committee.
We have no student comment or delegate report tonight. Item number seven, approval of minutes from the 5922 Regular School Committee. Could I get a motion and a second on?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anything on the minutes? Deb, could I get a vote call, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Coogan?
Yes. We have one travel request to come in front of us tonight, item eight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the travel request for?
Just a, I'm not opposed to the, obviously, but the Verizon people, are they now working for us? Is that, what is the status? When I first saw this, I thought, why is it coming before the committee if they're working for Verizon? And then we're working for now and it's approved by a person that works for Verizon?
Yeah, it's still a travel request, so the school committee still has to approve out-of-state travel. This is the last year.
Yeah, the only thing I would just say is a point of, as I looked back into it, it looks like Dr. Bronhardt had asked for it, but I would assume that this comes from the school folks, not from the Verizon lady. That's
Right, right.
Because on the bottom of it says Jennifer Cooley approving it. And I was like, who's Jennifer Cooley? I'd never heard of her before.
Because they're paying for it, right.
Yeah, but just a technicality, but thank you, I yield.
Do we call the roll on that, Deb?
No. Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine, acceptance of donations. We have three items to accept tonight. I would like to take a motion, a second, on accepting the donations.
Motion paid.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Why don't you read the items for us, Superintendent Ponce? Then we'll, oh, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just a point of, we see this all the time from, Mr. Damaris is the Darfy High one, and it's always a very small amount. And I think that the point of why we ask for the donations is so that we can accept them. But this seems like almost a regular occurrence of a very small amount. So I'd like to make a motion that we have anything $50 or above, so that, basically, this is a waste of paperwork and time for Mr. Damaris or his staff. So if we did $50 or above as an amendment here for the policy, we wouldn't have to get, if somebody got $18 donated, it'll just save that person time, that's all.
I don't have a problem with that. So
Make it 100.
You want to make it 100?
I mean, I, I mean, 50, but why not amend it to 100?
Yeah, it's fine with me. I mean, the tenor of it was, we would get noticed, but this, every time I look at this, I say, all of this work and paperwork and paper for what?
For $16.
For $16, and it's not
Okay, so, motion to accept the donations with an amendment by Mr. Aguirre, seconded by Ms. Larrabee for $100. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Ponce, want to read them, please?
Sure. To Darfy High School, on behalf of Principal Damaris, from Ohio, apply Prince, $16.80. From, to Watson Elementary School, on behalf of Principal Hoag, from Stonehill College Alumni Engagement Office, 100 backpacks filled with school supplies. And to Fall Republic Schools, for, on behalf of Claudia Costa and the SEL Department, from Decker Deaconess Home, 2,000 pairs of shoes and boots. Thank you all.
Thank you. Deb, please call the roll?
We did already?
Oh, we did? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Item number 10.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask one question?
Sure.
So I think I brought this up at one of the prior meetings about the policy on GoFundMes and the like. If we could just ask the superintendent to get back to us on what that is and not, so that people, there should be a protocol on it?
Are, are you, none of these were from?
No, 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 separate issue, just on the donations. So I just, as this was coming up in my head, I kept thinking, what about the, what are we doing with, when somebody has a GoFundMe? Is there any approvals needed? So, right now, we're funded pretty well. And we should be funding things that students, teachers, and staff need, not having people have to go out and do GoFundMe to try and get an extra computer like it used to happen in the past. But I think there should be a protocol so that it doesn't get into, you know, how many more times we're going to keep seeing things out there. So I'm just asking for some sort of one pager from you on your feeling on GoFundMes, if it's working well, or do we have to put some controls in it? Thank you.
Item number 10, approval of contracts. Obviously, we have a number of contracts here tonight to approve. If anybody has any that they want pulled out, I would wish they would mark them. If not, I will take them as a group. I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Can I just illuminate, is one of the contracts we do need to pull out?
Superintendent Ponce?
Yes. I'd like to pull out, illuminate, because we don't, that needs to come out because we are withdrawing that one.
That's on the second page, under miscellaneous contracts. Illuminate, no longer on the agenda? Anything, anything further?
How about, can we pull three, four, 10? 23?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre, you talking about the third item down?
On the page, whatever the memo is.
Oh, the memo.
Oh, the memo.
So it's Replay Maintenance. I just had a question on it.
Replay Maintenance is number three. What's the other ones?
WB Mason.
WB Mason is four.
10, Power School.
Power School's right at the bottom, that's 10.
I had 19, but the superintendent addressed that.
Okay.
23, Power School.
The top one, applicant tracking?
29,000.
Yep.
And 28, cultured care.
Cultured care is at the bottom of the page. Okay, so
And 32, premium human resources.
Precision human resources, okay. So excluding three, four, Power School for 164,000, Power School for 29,000, cultured care, and precision human resources. Could I get a motion to accept all contracts as written?
Show move.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll, and then we'll go through Mr. Aguirre's.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, item number three, Replay Maintenance. Mr. Aguirre?
I just had a question on what Passport 365 seat is.
So it's the, it's the testing mechanism for the GMAX testing.
So they're all, it's all part of the testing?
It's all part of the testing and the revive. The revive is basically the refreshing of the field. So there were some spots that, that we needed, some base material put in, a couple of dips in the field that didn't pass the original GMAX test that we did before we hired Revive to come in and do that work. And then the test follow-up after that.
Yeah, thank, it just said in Passport 365 seat, and I was wondering
Yeah, it's just all part of
I didn't think we were dealing with seats, but
Yeah.
That just must be that. So that was my only question on it.
Anything further on Replay Maintenance? Mr. Aguirre?
Nope.
Do you want to take them separately, or?
Motion approved.
Okay, motion to approve Replay Maintenance. I have a second.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item, WB Mason, 254. Mr. Aguirre?
I just, this number was very high, so I'm just looking for some background on what it is. It's $250,000 for the special ed staff to move in. And I was wondering what's up with that.
So basically, the, as the special ed staff moved out of 360 Ellsbury Street and moved temporarily into where they are currently, all of that furniture was really in bad shape, between leaking roofs, and a lot of it was hand-me-downs already from other buildings. So it was in rough shape. We got approximately 25 employees, so there's 25 workstations, so to speak, probably 12 offices, complete furnishings for offices, a waiting room, a reception area, and some workrooms, conference rooms. It's modular units, all put together into a configuration that they've designed to expediate, or expedite, I'm sorry, expedite the workload as it passes through the sped department. So, there's, it's all modular units, it's shelving cabinets, file cabinets, there's a lot of different pieces of equipment, probably total pieces of about 320 different pieces of furniture, panels, and the like. So that is, that number, this is three, we did a three contractor FAC bid. They do the design work also, so that's all in here. And this is also the installation. So this is a complete package.
Yeah, I just asked because I think, I still think, even with that explanation, that's a lot of money personally. And they must have had something. The amount of times that we've moved people and moved places and the furniture that we've had in, you know, schools, we just built a whole high school, like, you know, to think that we needed to start from scratch there is surprising to me. So I've asked the superintendent to send a list of, you know, what that is. It just, it's a real high number, I think.
Sure.
With that, I yield.
Anything further on WB Mason?
I have a question.
Ms. Roderick?
You said that was temporary, that they were going to be there?
So we've moved them from the old building
Yep.
before demolition into the Pace Building. And they're in a temporary setting. So they have office space now, they're working off of tables in that space, because we didn't move any of the desks from the old space. Most of the desks made it from the building to the dumpster for broken drawers, different things like that. The desks we did salvage, we put into trailers, and we've been distributing those to other areas within the district for new teachers. So that was, we probably saved about 12 desks of everything we had across the district out of the old building. I don't think there were 10, 10 desks at Darfy that we saved. A lot of tables, work tables for schools, but not a lot for office space.
Right, I just want to understand, where you have them now, is there temporary?
Is there a temporary spot? Their finished area, the area is completely finished, the new setting is completely finished, construction-wise.
Okay, with this new furniture?
So this would be the furniture piece, yes.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to understand, to make sure that we weren't buying again when they made another move.
No, no.
That now we were going to be in this position. Okay, so with that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre, WB Mason?
The only other question, comment I have on it is, it says, funding has come out of the FNO maintenance supplies account?
Yes.
I think this is a one-time purchase, like a special account. So when you compare year to year, you're going, this is going to be highly inflated? We don't have another account, like new purchases, or?
I don't believe that it's going to be that far off. We did have some other expenses last year, not to this size, but equal amounts of this broken up. So I don't see, I don't think you're going to see much of a difference from year to year, because we did do a lot of
Two years ago, we would see
Furniture-wise, I mean, this is, this is a large furniture purchase. We did have a furniture purchase on the opposite side of the building that was done through the construction site, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
And that was around the same amount?
That's much smaller, because less people. It's a different build-out on the, on the family center.
Got it, thank you.
You well set, Mr. Aguirre?
Yes, I yield, thank you, sir.
On WB, I need a motion and a second on WB Mason?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion.
Second.
For Ms. Larrabee. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Next item, Power School, for 164,000. Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, the only reason I asked to hold this was, I know there's an update later on, I had some other questions that were related to it. But I know, as you know, I've been sort of all over this issue, that I don't think that they've been as clear and supportive as they said they were going to be. So I'll still maintain that, in my personal opinion. But I don't think we should be paying them for year two before we know year one is really ready to go, straightened out, and everything that's, they've told us they were going to do that they did. So I don't want to vote for this tonight for that reason, because I still think there's issues. And that's all. So I'm not going to be supporting it, but if anybody else wants to vote on it without the information, so be it. But I don't think we should be voting on it at the present time, because we're going to take what we have as a leverage and give it away to them, or we're going to pay anyway, you know?
Motion approved.
I would, I would let Mr. Caporal explain to us what this is.
Yeah.
So when we initially did the contract with Power Schools, they only charged us for a half-year's worth of services from January to July to do the implementation piece. And now this is the licensing to move us forward into the new fiscal year, July to July, very similar to what we would pay yearly for X2. This is all the licensing for all of the platforms involved in Power School.
Licensing, now, do they have a, Mr. Hart?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, Mr. Caporal, is, is it accurate, if we don't approve this tonight, that we can't move forward with Power School, with this aspect of Power School?
Depends on what Power School would do. They could stop the licensing, yes. I mean, if the bill isn't paid. It's not something that we even talked about, because on my end, the Power School implementation, there were some speed bumps and potholes along the way, but it's much more smooth now. We're getting the internal supports that we need from Power School. And again, 20 years of data in a very short period of time, we knew that there were going to be hiccups along the way. And as we start to use the system, there are things that end users are requesting as fixes. They're also seeing some differences from one system to another. We're not making any major changes from one system to another. We're using what's under the hood right now. And as we meet with the central office and senior staff, if there are going to be, you know, customizations as we move forward, then we would get Mr. Michael Azic and his team and Power School involved. Again, though, we haven't even broached the subject internally with senior staff to not pay a bill moving forward, because we're into this for licensing. So if they decided to stop, then we wouldn't have our data. And I just urge you guys to know that also, X2 has not been updated since June 27. So if they did decide to, you know, turn our access off for a time, we'd have no way to take attendance, we'd have no options or anything, because X2 is not set up for the current school year.
So right now, you're satisfied with the relationship you have with Power School moving forward?
I mean, moving forward, there are things that we're going to work on with them.
There's some hip, we all know there's hiccups.
Yes, there's growing pains involved. However, I do feel they have been more receptive as of late to changes. And Brian and his team have been on the phone with them, it seems like endless hours. And as they find stuff, they are very receptive to fixing it. I know that we're still ironing out some pieces with 504 plans, because the state template that they use is different from what was in X2. So a lot of the pieces are just getting our data in there. And they, the data will be continuing throughout the school year. This time next year, we'll still be putting data into the system.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay, I have, Mr. Aguirre?
So the system's been, I'm assuming this is on here because we haven't paid it yet?
This is just on here because we got the, you know, the new invoicing for the next year, so we have to get it into a contract, so Mr. Almeida and his team can pay the bill so we can move forward.
But it said it was year two, so we must have already had a contract. This, in the writing here, it says, this is year two.
Year two.
So you should have year one, year two, automatic.
Year, when we did the deal initially, it was just year one for implementation. And what they did, Power School did, was to try to cut some of the costs down to get us in as a new customer. They billed us in that one block. And then moving forward, we were always going to be responsible for the licensing fees.
So this isn't year two?
This is year, full, first, full year.
Right.
Because we paid implementation fees for July through January.
So when I'm reading this, it says, this is year two. That's not, that's not accurate. That's not, that's not accurate. Otherwise, we've been, we've been operating for a couple of weeks already without it being paid, so the theory that we can't hold this right now to make sure everything is good, we've done it for two weeks without the payment, and they haven't shut us off on it yet, and...
They haven't, correct, but I, I just don't know what their thought process would be, new company, we don't know if they're gonna turn, you know what I mean, we don't know if they would turn us off, because it hasn't even been a discussion internally about not paying a bill, because they have been living up to their end of the bargain.
Right, but it's not automatic, if we, if we just wrote the table this for one more month, doesn't mean that we're not gonna have service, that's what I'm-
I, I don't, Mr. Agia, I don't know that, because we have never broached the subject with the company.
And the contract, does it say it has to be paid by the first day of school? What does the contract say?
Net, isn't it, it's net. Yeah, it's usually net thirty. So we just got the bill a couple of weeks ago, so that's why it's on this agenda.
So, I think you understand my point.
I do.
And I also don't think, to be totally honest, that Power School has done what they said they were gonna do, and I'll send the video, I went back and watched the video of the gentleman that sat before us and said, "We're gonna make sure everything works seamless." I have the video, it's all fifty seconds. It said we were gonna have a dedicated person just for us, all of this promises that they said they were gonna do, and you can sit up there, and anybody else can sit up there and say that they've been better and all this other stuff, but if we're being honest, they didn't do what they said they were gonna do, in my opinion. And that's part of my frustration, is that, because I hear from people all through this department, just like everybody else does, that things aren't going as smooth necessarily as what we would want. Case in point, the special ed one. We, they were promised us it was gonna work seamlessly. We got a memo today that's, I think it's a little bit of fluff, in my opinion, but it says that we're working through a couple of things. I think there's bigger issues with that special education module than what anybody wants to say, and we paid thirty grand extra for that. So when I voice my frustration, it's not you, Mr. Cabral, it's just a point of, these people told us they were gonna do X, Y, and Z, and everything was gonna be great, and everything else. I already think we're probably having some buyer's remorse going through this program, but we, nobody wants to say, "No, get them out in here in front of us, and let's hold them accountable to what they said they were gonna do." Nobody on this committee or in the administration wants to do that, we just keep, "Oh, we're working with them, we're gonna try." Well, you keep on trying, because it's gonna continue to get worse, and then you're gonna come back to us and say, "We need to go somewhere else to do another expense, to do this, that, and the other." I know it's coming, I can feel it, it's coming. We're gonna have another expense on our hands, and that's why I want to hold these people accountable, to say, "No, you said you were gonna do something, and do it." So, we can take the vote, I'm voting no, with that, I yield.
Okay, I got a motion from Mr. Hart, and do I have a second?
I have, no, can I answer?
Oh, you got a question, sure.
So, Mr. Cabral, in your view, in your perspective, do we have a reason to not, like-
At this time, at this time, there is no, you know, I don't have a feeling, or Mr. Michael Azak and his team have not given me a reason to say, "Mr. Almeida, hold the bill, don't pay the invoice."
Right, and I go back to say, and ask again, what is the relationship that you have with them? Are they your beck and call? Are they answering emails? Are you, are they helping us with the, with these hiccups? Like, what is the relationship right now?
Communication-
Are you frustrated with the relationship?
No, I was frustrated early on, very frustrated early on, however, some of those frustrations that we had with the company were, in fact, due to some of our historical data, the way it was put into X2 historically over those twenty years. So it's not just like grabbing from one column and bringing to another, there were differences in the way that Power School runs and the way that X2 did, and again, Mr. Agia is correct, because he said that there were districts that they did X2 to Power School-
Well, Ms. Agia, I didn't say it, they said it.
They, exactly, he's just reiterating.
Those were their exact words, actually.
Correct, and I've listened to the fifty-second clip over and over again as well, however, our data did look differently than some of those other districts. So, early on, I was very frustrated, Tracy, Dr. Curley, myself, and the superintendent, we met endlessly on this stuff, and we were concerned early on. However, we had a meeting, and they brought more resources in, and things were moving along much smoother. I will say that there are still some issues with the IEP process, that you can't necessarily clean up all the bugs when you go live, so Kristin Farias and her team, and Brian and her, his team, have been working with them, and they have been much more receptive, so things are starting to come together, but I've been completely transparent and forthcoming with the committee as this process has been going on, there will be bumps in the road. Can I expect to be smooth sailing out this, you know, from this point on? I pray every day that that's the possibility, you know, but there will be a big project like this, with the amount of data and the amount of gatekeepers in the process, we are still gonna have hiccups.
So, Mr. Cabral, you confident moving forward?
Yes.
Thank you, I yield.
Can I, before we go, can I get a second on Mr. Hart's motion to approve it, and then Mr. Agia?
Say that again?
Amy wants a second.
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Agia.
The, my only point in saying this, and it's not to be critical of you, Mr. Cabral, but you're the chief information officer, and this entire Power School conversion falls under you, doesn't fall under Mr. Michael Azak, his team, special education, or any. So when I, when I'm advocating that we hold these people accountable, it's in a way to try to help you, to make sure that you can tell these people that we're holding you accountable to it, because you're putting your name and your reputation on the line for Power School. So when you say to me that you think it's going well and all this stuff, I'm gonna hold you to that personally, because that's the bottom line, is that you're the chief information officer. You guys came to this committee and said, "We want to change to Power School," and spent two or three times as much money as we spent on the last one. You and your superintendent at the time, the other administrators, all said that. So when I, when I'm voicing my frustration, it's not to you personally, but make no mistake about it, Power School is under you as the chief information officer, not Mr. Michael Azak. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further?
I can, sitting here, understand Mr. Agia's frustration. Every time we talk about Power Schools, I can feel it, and I feel it as well. My hesitation in voting no is that if they do pull the license, then we're gonna be in big-time trouble. I'm all for holding them accountable, I'm all for having them come back to answer questions from the committee, hundred percent behind that, but my hesitation in voting no is that it's gonna cause bigger problems if they do pull the license, and we're having issues, like you said, with attendance or what have you, I don't think we want to even go there. And because you can't tell me, "Well, we got sixty days to pay the bill," did the bill come with a due date? You know, like, I get my electric bill, there's a due date.
Kevin, Kevin's looking.
Okay, 'cause if there's a due date, and they're saying the bill's due in sixty days, ninety, whatever, ninety days, and Mr. Agia wants to hold off on this, I'll totally support that, but if we don't have a due date, then I'm hesitant, then I'm gonna sit here and vote no, and regret that later when things blow up. I mean, if we could figure that out, I'd be interested in knowing that.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, take your time.
And also, I mean, if the committee would like, we can get Power School to come into a technology subcommittee meeting and sit down with that group first, and then Mr. Agia and that committee can ask questions, and if we need to bring them into the full committee, we can try to set something up.
I think it's a great idea.
Concur.
Ms. Rogers?
Can I propose that we approve with the caveat that we have them come in within the next, like, forty-five days, and we be able to sit down and have a meeting, so that we were, we're covering both bases? But it's not a blanket, yes, we're gonna approve, no questions asked, it's, we pay the bill, so we don't lose access. Do I think they would pull access? Probably not-
Correct.
-this is a large contract, like, let's be realistic, but in good faith, you know, this is sort of like that last good-faith effort, and you sit down with them and we hash out all of these concerns, but we have a plan, like, we need to meet within forty-five days, and that's an arbitrary number, but I think that might be a good compromise.
I think that's a great idea.
That's fine.
You say, "We pill the, we pay the bill, but you guys are gonna come in here and answer a lot of questions."
Okay, you'll set that up, Scott?
Yes, I'll reach out tomorrow morning.
All right, let's, let's, let's call the roll on this one. Good idea, Ms. Rogers. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes, ensuring that, that's the caveat.
Yeah. Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia?
And Ms. Rogers's suggestion, I think it's a good one, I've been asking for four months, five months, for them to come before us, but I think it should come before this full committee, not the subcommittee, because there's people on, on the subcommittee that have rightful questions, and they're hearing some of the same things I am, so I'd like it at a full committee meeting where we sit down and discuss with them.
Next month.
Sure, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That give you enough time, Scott, where's Scott go?
Scott?
Scott's, next month, next month's meeting, okay. Next item up is another Power School item, Mr. Agia, Naviance Renewal Service.
My question is, what grades does Naviance address? So, it's coming from the Student Services Contracted Account, but is that a high school thing?
High school.
So, why wouldn't it come from the high school budget? If we're looking at when we talked about redoing the budget so that they're like-
Cross centers.
-cross centers of the high school, I think, you know, I'm not opposed to it, I think Mr. Woodward has said it was beneficial, and I thought he might said they tried to do it in the middle schools or whatever, but if there's an expense from a school, it should go under the school for truth in budgeting. So, I'm not opposed to it, but I think that should, change should happen in the future. With that, motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Our next item, cultured care, Special Education Nursing Services. Mr. Agia, you had a question?
I'm just curious, it says the contract will pay for Special Education Nursing Services for the current year, it's a significant increase from the fiscal, prior fiscal year. I'm just looking for, there's nothing else background as far as what, what does that mean, significant increase, and what, is this, why do we have to hire an outside agency to handle nursing services? We've got more nurses now than we've ever had in the district, so not sure what this is.
Mr. Almeida?
So this is a contract that we have on a yearly basis, the amount changes every year, it's all dependent on what the students have in their IEPs, so the nurses follow the students essentially, to and from school and in school.
And what was it last year, so?
I believe it was about two-hundred-thousand dollars last year.
So it increased by four-hundred-thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And I would, Madam Superintendent, just under the same as the other piece? In my opinion, when something goes up four-hundred-thousand dollars, it's worthy of at least a one-page of beyond just passing this contract, because I have questions, probably everybody else has the same, like, what, but if we don't ask the question, we don't know, it went up by four-hundred-thousand. What is it that we're having? Can we hire in-house? You know, those are the questions that go in my head as we look at these things, so I think it's a service that needs to happen, so I'm gonna vote to approve it, but it's certainly not the way I, I think we should be doing it. With that, I yield. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Deb, please call the roll on cultured care.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next item is Precision Human Resources Staffing of Special Education Teachers and Assistance. Mr. Agia, you had a question?
So, once again, this item, and I apologize if some think that I'm asking too many questions, but here's the bottom line, we get a piece of paper that says, "The Precision Home Human Resource Contract Total is three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. This will provide for staffing of special education teachers and teacher assistants to the district. Funding will come from the operating budget Special Ed Contracted Services Account." That's what I'm reading here, so my question would be, just like it should be for, for anybody, would be, what is this? Is it, are we paying for the staff, are we, is this a consultant, are we doing, you know, a little more meat behind the information, and it's probably explainable, but certainly it was lacking information, that's why I asked.
Mr. Coogan?
Precision is a company that was formerly known as Delta Staffing. We use them from time to time for specialized staffing requirements when we're unable to fill a position. I believe this number is based on what we spent with them in the prior year, and an estimate of continuing certain services. They also provided services during the ESY program, we were unable to find staff for either paras or special education teachers, or specific, special education-related services that needed to be provided during that time. So, they're sort of our stopgap for unable to fill positions that are compliance issue for us.
And how, how many staff was it?
In that number, I don't know, what I can tell you is that essentially, I would say their rate for the teacher staffing is probably somewhere in the forty to forty-five dollar an hour range, the paras are probably a little less, which is comparable to what we pay for what I'll call a loaded salary for a para or a teacher with their salary and benefits attached to it. The employees in that unit belong to Precision Staffing, they send them to us, and then bill us hourly for them.
And we have agreements with them, or is this, we just pay them?
It's an annualized agreement, based on our needs.
But, and the agreement, is it a contract, does it articulate anything about responsibility?
It does. In other words, essentially, it's just their employee, they have to go through the same vetting process as if we were hiring them, so coreies, background checks, et cetera, and they assume the responsibility from comp and, as well as, you know, any benefits associated with that salary, they pay them. They're their employee working on our side.
I, I think it's similar to what we had to do with speech services in a different contract.
Correct.
What I'm asking is if we could, through the superintendent, get some, more information on that, the contracts, that usually when this happens, we're paying a lot more than what we would have to pay if we had our own employee, in certain cases, I don't know about these contracts, because I haven't seen them, but, once again, it just begs the question of, is this every year? Like, if this is every year, then why?
It, it is true, Mr. Agia, we'll pay somewhat of a premium, if you like, I don't think the premium might be as high as you might be anticipating, what I can tell you is that those positions are positions that we're unable to fill. We continue to post those positions for ourselves, so that if we can fill them with our own employee, we can go that way and discontinue the services. So that's why that number kind of fluctuates, because their staff floats in and out of our building as needed, we can release them anytime we can fill it with our own employee.
So, if you had the same number last year, then apparently you didn't spend the whole thing, based on what you just explained?
I think last year, we actually spent a little bit more based on compliance issues with special ed services, I think last year was an increase.
Spending more doesn't go with what you said about if we find somebody, they can release them, and we hire the person, so-
Correct.
It just, it begs a little more of the question, that's, that's all, I, we need the staff, I get it, but if you told me every year, we're gonna have to keep using a, an employment agency, the staff educators in our schools, that, I wouldn't be for that year in and year out, we gotta address it so that we can try to not have that happen. This is like sort of an emergency thing, not every year, and I don't know that data, because we don't get the data. What types of staff is it, what teachers is it, or any of that, I don't get that. All I get is this thing, that we're gonna use an agency, and it gives me a little heartache to, to look at it. So whatever information you can get, I'll make a motion to approve, and hopefully we get more info.
We'll get you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Deb, please call the roll on Precision Human Resources.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Rodriks.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item 11, approval of grants. We only have two grants tonight. Do I have any questions on the grants? Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, the one for the, it's 494,000 for the pre-K and the partnership, but as I was going through it, it looked, it was all from Citizens for Citizen, it was all other places. Are we just strictly a pass-through, and why are we involved in it?
We're a partner with them. Kristen's actually online, but we're a partner with them, so we're providing some additional services. Kristen, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. So, this is the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative, and so what this is, is we have partnered with People Inc. Preschool and Head Start. Each of those two agencies will be opening a classroom at their facilities. Those students will be registered, filtered through us, and some of those slots will be reserved for children with disabilities. Excuse me. The remaining slots will be available to families that meet eligibility requirements free of charge, so similar to if they were enrolling with us, but it opens additional space. The grant is also funding a special education itinerant team that will be going out to those sites to provide services to students on IEPs. And so, the need that that addresses is oftentimes when children are referred at two and a half for services, if they're found eligible and are currently enrolled in those programs, they then have to leave those programs and come to us in order to receive those services. And so, this allows them to stay in their current setting, and we would provide the services there. So, it's a mix of both expanding access to full-day preschool slots for families with a partnership with community programs and bringing special education services to students where they are currently attending.
So, what would have happened in the past under that condition?
Under, if a student became eligible?
Yeah.
So, a couple of different things. Depending on the center, the student unenrolls with that center and comes and enrolls in the Florida Public Schools. We do have some children that dual-enroll, which means they spend half of their day at the community-based program and half of their day in one of our classrooms, which creates some unnecessary transition. So, this allows the student to stay there in their community program full day and still receive the services that they need.
And this is a new grant, or is this?
This is a new grant. So, it's not new to, to the state, but it's new to Fall River. This was the first year People Inc. had actually reached out through the mayor's office about interest in partnering with us on this, and so it's something that we've been working on with them. So, this is, we are cohort three in the state, so it's new to us, but not new to the state.
So, it would lessen the burden, the emergency burden, is what you're saying?
It'll lessen the transition for children and also open more full-day slots. So, when we talk about the idea of expanding access to full-day preschool through the mixed delivery system, this is part of that work. And so, partnering with the community agencies that have space in their centers as well to provide alternatives to families, they provide longer day and full-year access in their programs, and so for some families, it meets a need that we're not able to meet.
The, my last question on it is the, when you look at the funding for children that fit those categories that you just talked about, is there any reimbursement from the state for, for those seats if they're registered with us?
So, we're working on getting all of the, we have a meeting with the state coming up, and then Mr. Aguirre is also connecting with, New Bedford Public Schools has this grant and has had it for a few years, and so we met with their team once already and are working with them to learn through what they've learned over the last, I believe, three years that they've had this grant, so that we can make sure we're maximizing on what is available to us for families.
What I was referring to, though, is outside of the grant, if we have a four-year-old that becomes eligible and needs services and that opens up another slot, is that reimbursable to, to the state?
For children, it's for children who are in this, these classrooms at People Inc. and Head Start?
No, our, our own.
Yes, they're reimbursable at 50%.
Right. Any, anybody that's under five, that would be 50%?
I believe so. Mr. Aguirre could say better, but I believe it's half for preschool.
Okay, thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other question on the two grants?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Rodriks.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Committee of the whole, 12-1, is a vote to approve the selection and appointment of Virginia's Wong Snyder Nurse for the Florida Public Schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Anybody have any questions on the new nurse? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Rodriks.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12.2 is a discussion and vote to approve the district handbook. It's presented by Maria Potts, Superintendent of Schools.
So, what you have is our yearly submission of the handbook. Aside from cleaning up some language, there are two additions in, you got that today, the district technology policy, as well as the student transfer policy, which both had gone before the subcommittee, each subcommittee, and now are being inserted into handbook. Other than that, there are no major changes.
Any discussions on the district handbook? Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Rodriks.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-3, update on Power School as presented by Scott Cabral, our Chief Information Officer. Mr. Cabral.
So, we opened up school, there were bumps in the road. Second day of school, the system was very slow. Internally, we found that there was a plugin that was running in the background that was causing some lag for end users. We turned off that plugin, and Power School is looking at why it would slow it down, as well as, we're thankful that internally, we found that to make it a little bit, you know, smoother for the end user. Attendance is being taken in the system. Teachers are able to submit conduct referrals, they're able to add student journal logs. On the special education side, the IEP live data was migrated over from Aspen. Kristen and her team and Brian and his team are still reviewing with Power School some inconsistencies in certain fields. However, the majority of the IEP data is in there for every student. I know that there is a call this week to go over that as well again. We had a trainer come in to work specifically with the special education district staff who were trained previously but didn't necessarily feel that they were trained well enough to use the system. That happened over the course of last week, and the goal is also to be able to start doing some of those trainings internally with Kristen's staff as well as Brian's staff. Health module, I have to say, was a very smooth transition. Karen Long and Sally Borges were amazing this summer. The nurses were using the system during summer school, so that helped, because we were able to get some instantaneous feedback and have time to work on some of those issues. There are some pieces of data that are still not in the system, but it's not going to affect, you know, the nurses right now on a daily basis, and, and again, Brian's team and Karen and Sally have been working very well together in, you know, in squashing problems as they arise, or actually finding issues and fixing them before they're seen to the, you know, the end users. Enrollment module, that was the smoothest piece, I believe, just because we had quite a bit of lead time to work on it, and the parent information center under Cindy Cudo and Brian's team were able to work that out, work out all the bugs. I will say that we're in the support side of that now. The project is done, so we're already receiving support on that side, and they have actually been very responsive to questions and to helping us on that side. We're not in the support piece yet for any of the main SIS system, because we're still in the build-out. So, as we start to finalize some of this, we're at about 94% complete of the main project. We'll start to go into the support side when Brian and his team feel that they're able to sign off on the main piece. As far as imports from Aspen, like I've been saying for months, we'll be doing those imports for the rest of this school year into next summer. There is just so much historical data there, so they're bringing over the pieces that they need now. They're leaving the legacy stuff, so we can get this school year running smooth and, and people trained on the system as we move forward, and then as there's some pockets of time, they'll continue to, you know, bring pieces in. The SIMS team's focus for term one is to work on translated reports, creation of report cards, traditional and standard-based, and progress reports. We're looking at the 504 training now. Brian actually had a phone call this morning with them, and they're going to set up some training, because Brian actually saw not a floor on their side, but something that comes over from Aspen. There were too many fields, and he's actually recommending that we, there's about 100 or so 504s right now active, that they get cleaned up internally by us and not imported over from Aspen, because he's going to see some data lost there. So, they're working that piece out now. He's going to begin to start working on the state reporting training for the school-level staff. The one piece about Power School that's different from Aspen is we'll be able to see chain logs and changes to the system, so Brian and his team will be able to see errors more quickly than we were in the past with Aspen. And again, continue importing data files, and the big piece for this year is looking at options for continued training and then customizations as we move forward. Brian has been working with the buildings, the principals, the admin team, and as there's a customization, he jarts it down, and then we look at it from a district level to see what we're going to customize as we move forward.
Just a comment for superintendent, so where it says opening a school, teachers are able to submit conduct referrals and add student journal logs, and I know we spoke about this in the past, about keeping uniformity with all schools, making sure that the conduct is entered in a similar fashion. Is that, has that been done, or is that in progress?
That's in progress. We actually have some training coming up for consistency's sake. I agree, we need to, we saw lots of discrepancies even in, within buildings, so we're trying to systematize that.
Yeah, whatever you can do, and it's not to be critical of anybody, but we really need to see if a student gets a conduct, it needs to go into conduct referrals in the same fashion from each school, because when we get the data, it's all skewed, because somebody says they had zero conduct referrals. Doesn't mean suspensions, and I would sit here and say, how does that even possible? That would, 800 students, 600 students you don't have, so conduct referrals are going to happen. It is what it is, and I think the schools need to know that they need to put it in so that we can help, and if one school's got tremendous amount, that means maybe they're holding kids accountable more than other schools, but so be it. So, I think we're on the same page. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further for Mr. Cabral? Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number 12.4 is a second read and vote to approve the Security Resource Officers Memorandum of Understanding as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on our agreement with the SROs in the Florida Police Department? Mr. Aguirre.
Well, the only changes to this, the name Florida Republic Schools, I see that highlighted a lot, and I don't know if it was, if I was missing something or?
Yeah, so it's, it's a boilerplate from the state. This is mimicking what the state has. They, they took more ownership in, in the SRO operations of, of the schools, and it keeps referring here and there to the different sections of, of the law, and, and so this, with the exception of Florida Republic Schools, this is the state document, and, and this has been signed off by the chief already.
But this was last year, like, we approved this three, March of 2021.
Right.
So, when I, I was not the subcommittee, but I'm looking at it, the only things that are highlighted are the yellow for the name, so there's no changes whatsoever in this document or the MOU, the operating procedure, or anything like that, that?
Exactly. What's changed in, in the document is the document itself has, has had a facelift. The last document was a lot less pages. There's a lot more information in here, in this document than there was in the previous document.
Officer Galveo's here, so certainly he can ask, answer some questions.
I, maybe it's just something else is not getting me. If this document isn't the same as the prior document, then everything that was different, if what we're approving is the same as what was done before and there was anything new, should be highlighted in yellow. When you said there was additional verbiage in here and stuff?
This is all state law that's been added. So, this document is the, is the document that we had with all of the improvements that the state added to it.
All right, maybe, maybe Sergeant Galveo can explain that better.
Good evening, everybody. Sergeant Galveo. If you see something highlighted in yellow, it's because that's what, it was tailored to the Florida Republic School District. So, this is a boilerplate model MOU developed by the state. I took this MOU and I tailored it to the Florida Police, I'm sorry, the Florida Republic School District. I created two other MOUs very similar to this for other school districts that we have MOUs with, but with this particular MOU that you have in front of you, if it's highlighted, it's because it's been tailored, any particular section has been tailored to the Florida Republic School District.
So, the one that was signed March of 2021, the only thing that was, that it wasn't doing is show Florida Republic Schools? Like, I, I just don't, what I'm looking at is one document, an MOU, and it's signed on March of 2021. The only thing that's highlighted is, there's yellow for Florida Republic Schools, and then it says something about the salary of the SRO shall be covered by the public schools. There was no other changes from the last year's document?
This is the first time that this particular MOU, which was developed by the MOU Commission since the GIL Act, which is the Justice Equality and Accountability in Law Enforcement Act of 2020, this is the first MOU model developed by that MOU Commission, which I took from that time in 2021 and tailored it to the Florida Republic School District. So, I know there's been a first read, I think this is the second read, but I don't, the, the MOU that was prior to this was about six to seven pages. This is a much more extensive MOU developed by the MOU Commission. So, I don't, I'm not sure if it's, if you sign off on it on, on that first read or, or whatnot, but I know that this is the first time this has been brought to the full committee.
Yeah, the, the only thing I'm trying to, and I'm hopeful that I can say this once again, and somebody can understand it, because the one that's signed March 21 last year, the MOU by the school committee approved on March 8th, and the current one, which is different, the only thing in yellow in this new one is the Florida Republic Schools thing. But it's not what you're saying, because of the law and this and that from the state, that there's a lot of things that are changed in here from the prior one. So, when you get something that says, here's the yellow highlighted changes, all of the things you're referring to should look in yellow in here that are not in the other one, marked-up version. So, when I looked at this, I looked at it and said, oh, there's nothing changed, it's all just Florida Republic Schools. I didn't really look through this as much as I probably would have if you said, oh, this has changed a lot, because the state can tell you whatever they want as a model, but this is between us and you.
Correct. And, and from 2020, as soon as this was passed in 2021, I spoke with the superintendent at the time, we actually had a, a subcommittee meeting regarding this, and it was brought to, to attention at that time, and that's when this was first presented. So, I don't know what's happened since then, but the other MOU was completely, completely different than this one. This is a completely different MOU.
I, I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that I would say it different. What I'm saying to you is, I didn't even look at this, because we were provided a marked-up version, which is highlighted in yellow. The only things that were marked in yellow were Florida Republic Schools names, whether it was through the subcommittee or not. This is what we are voting on now, and I didn't think there was any changes, and you're telling me the whole document's changed. So, that's, hence the reason why I have some concerns. Now, I've had concerns in the past about the MOUs, and we changed some things in the prior MOU that I think were good. One of them was the prior sergeant, I don't think you were on at the time, actually acknowledged the fact that the SRO's duty was to help us maintain order in the school.
I, I was around for that one.
You know, so, is that in the current? Or is that taken out because the state said we can't?
It's spoken to more indepthly, so I would say, yes, it's in there.
But you can understand, that's some of my, you know, frustration with it. Has nothing to really do with you, sir. The part about the salary of the SRO, I've said this ad nauseam already, that we need a different agreement with the state, with the city, so that we fund all of the SRO positions. Has that happened?
They had a meeting last week. They have another one scheduled and two, that's part of negotiations.
Negotiations with Kevin and Hupbridge in downtown. Right.
We started the meeting this week. I agree with you. We're, we're on the same page.
Yeah, on P, on whatever page in one of these documents, it says, the salary of the SRO shall be covered by the Florida Republic Schools.
It's just the lieutenant or the captain that's the outlier right now, correct?
Right.
There's only one out, and that's the one we're working on, Kevin.
The sergeant.
Right.
I meant sergeant.
So I'd like to approve this and make an amendment that says, "The salary of all SROs shall be covered by the Florida Republic Schools."
As amended by Mr. Aguirre. Do we have a second?
Second.
I just have a question though.
Ms. Rogers. Oh, Kevin, are you done? I'm sorry. You done?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. The only reason why I say that, I'm not trying to, I think everybody agrees. If this gentleman is working tirelessly to help us with the schools and this and that, why would we not be paying? It's a no-brainer. But now we've got to wait for months after months after months. Why don't we just, that's why I'm trying to do this. Let's just put it in. And if we at the beginning of the essay, we can only afford eight SROs, including the sergeant, that's the decision we make. But it's foolish to have this gentleman working for the schools basically full-time, but his salary's going to be paid on the city side, and we have money? It doesn't make sense. So I yield.
Okay, Ms. Rogers.
Just a quick question. Is it safe to say that the previous MOU, we drafted together, and now the state came in with their model?
I'm not sure who drafted the MOU, which was in effect when I first came in. That was just an MOU that was in existence prior to me coming into the office. All I know is that since 2020, that the GIL Act enacted this MOU Commission to come up with a model MOU for all municipalities in the state. So that's one I went off of.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify for folks in case, you know, there's some questions there about like how that came to be. I read it as that MOU, that original one that was signed off on last year, looks like it was something that was drafted internally, like this is between Florida Republic Schools, with maybe some guidance. But now there's this template that we can go back and use, and that's why this looks different than March of 2021. Is that?
That's accurate to say, yes.
Okay. With that, I yield.
Okay, so I think we should do this in two parts. First, because it's funding. Mr. Aguirre's amendment to approve the Florida School Department funding the sergeant or lieutenant, I don't know what your role is now there, Sergeant.
Currently a sergeant, yes.
I'm promoting, yeah. So could I get a second on Mr. Aguirre's motion?
I second.
I got a second. Can we get a vote on that?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, the second reading of the SRO agreement between the schools and the city, as amended by Mr. Aguirre. Mr. Aguirre?
We had, in the past, had a standard operating procedure, if I recall, and we looked at the two documents to make sure that they weren't, they were conflicting at one point. I think you helped to clear that up. So I would assume that, because it's not here as part of this vote, there's nothing in your standard operating procedures that would be counter...
Upon my review of the standard operating procedures, which has been completely updated since I've been in the office, nothing, you know, it's in tandem with this MOU.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, can we get a roll call, Deb?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.5 is discussion and vote to approve the SEL Integration Specialist Job Description as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Claudia Costa, Lead School Adjustment Counselor, SEL Coordinator.
Good evening. So this position, we sent a memo in preparation for this discussion. This position was budgeted in the spring when the budget was created. This position is designed to function almost like a coach for the school staff in their common planning meetings and their preparation meetings for the expansion of the SEL services that you've so kindly invested in this year. So the role of this person would be to go from school to school in an itinerant fashion and work with those staff in those buildings during those meetings to make sure that they're up to speed, and also to monitor the data that comes out of whatever SEL programs or data that we're compiling that we're required to report back to the state. That person would work in cooperation with and under the direction of Ms. Costa, who supervises SEL services across the district.
You want to add anything, Ms. Costa?
So we're also looking with this position too, to really look at what are our students reading and how do we incorporate this as well too, and really work with our SEL in our castle competencies, in our books, in our history, in our math class, and being a support for our teachers as well too, to be able and feel more comfortable incorporating that.
Thank you. Any questions for the SEL Coordinator, Ms. Costa? Mr. Aguirre?
So I think in theory, we had talked about this in the past, and as I'm looking at the job description and some of the responsibilities, like number two, the bullying designate for the district, who is that current?
So I am the, I'm in charge of the bullying, and I have a co-chair with me.
Yep. So it almost looks like this is an administrative type position in some ways, when it looks at performance and supervising folks in the schools that are working on this, teachers and the like, that we're trying to embed SEL into all of these different functions. And...
They're not going to be supervising anybody. It's providing support so that way they're more comfortable into delivery of the SEL. So not necessarily supervising anybody at all.
But should they?
They're coaching.
So it says, "Under required qualifications, leadership or supervisory experience preferred." But now we don't need that?
We want to make sure that they're able to go into these meetings and provide that, you know, that support in coaching with the teachers. They're not going to be evaluating or supervising anyone. They're going to be working alongside with me in our schools as well too, just really looking at where's some, where do we need to enhance maybe in some of our programs and the effectiveness, and then coming back and working with the SEL team to make changes if we need to, and to support schools as needed.
And how about the summers? Like, what would you think a summer would look like in the, like, planning and this type of position?
These aren't teachers, though. They're not going to be working this summer. This position is FREA.
Well, that's a decision we make.
Well, that's what we, I'm just telling you.
I'm just saying, what's here, I can see what's here. But everything that you're explaining, I'm not opposed to what you're explaining. But if we have to dig and try to make this the best possible position that can do what it needs to be done, for one, they need to work in the summer. They need to work longer hours, just like you do, Ms. Costa, and other people in the Administrators Union, because that's when the real planning will happen and all this other stuff. They might need to work a flex schedule, some nights, some different times, whatever it is. To me, everything that you're looking at here is not a coach, like an educational coach, and I don't know why it should already be negotiated through the FREA. Nothing against the FREA, but you have to follow the rules of the FREA. So that means the timing, the schedule, like, this is more of a position. When you, as the director, superintendent tells you you need to do something, they need to do something. We need all hands on deck all the time. We don't necessarily need the position only during the time of schools. We need them in the summers. We need other things. So a lot of what I'm reading here, I'm not opposed to. I think it's definitely needed, but I think we're missing the boat on how we're going to select the individual. The other piece of this, I think some of this looks like a contractor, like a consultant type of situation potentially, that we might get somebody that's the perfect person for this type of job, but if we have to have them in an FREA position, and they retired, and they might have a skill set that could do some of this work as a stipend, we can't do it if we pigeonhole ourselves into how we're going to fund it. So I'm not opposed to it, but I think some more work on how this gets paid, how many, what are the hours, and I still believe that when you put here leadership or supervisory experience preferred, we're going to need that. Because what happens is the person goes in and they're trying their best to implement in a school, and everybody's telling them, you know, bug off or whatever, you know, we're not going to, if they don't have any supervisory authority, they're going to say, well, you know, I'm in the union with them, I'm not so sure I can push this. You know, we're going to get into more issues. So if we're going to do it, let's do it right, in my opinion, and that's some of the flaws, in my opinion. With that, I yield.
When we were looking at this position, we didn't want someone in a social work background like I am. We wanted it to be someone who's a teacher and a teacher's support for all of our other teachers, really looking to coach and support them in their capacity to build our SEL in our district.
Anything, anything further?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Larrabee?
That's okay.
Sorry.
Hi, Claudia. So is this a position that you possibly foresee maybe two positions? I mean, our district is huge, right? Is this something that maybe you can see two positions?
I'm excited to even push one forward right now, because I think this is great to have someone just solely focus on this, as our, into our district this large. Just the fact of having one person focus solely on this, to me, is exciting to push forward right now.
Right. I mean, you say that they'd be visiting schools and supporting teachers and coaching. I mean, there's a lot of teachers. I mean, this is a K through probably eight. Is that accurate, or are we going to go right through 12?
I'd like to go right through 12.
Right through 12. So that's a lot of teachers. That's a lot of land. It's a lot of schools. I'm just, I mean, if you want, starting with one is great, but I see down the future, this may be, moving on to a couple of them, maybe three. I mean, I think it's important work, and I really hope we vote for this tonight moving forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Rogers?
So do we want the bullying coordinator to be somebody who's a teacher? Or are we looking for somebody to be, because you said this wasn't going to be somebody with a social work background, you know how I feel about that. But you said that this isn't going to be somebody with a social work background, that this was going to be somebody with an educational background.
Right.
And so do we, is that what we're looking for in terms of the bullying coordinator position?
Well, the bullying coordinator, so this curriculum that goes on our bullying curriculum, so the teachers are the ones who roll that curriculum out. So we want to make sure that they're getting the coaching and the support that they need with this curriculum, with the curriculum. So having someone who has done the curriculum or has been in front of a classroom to be the person leading that curriculum and that support, to me, is how I see it being most effective.
Okay. I think I read that differently when it said bullying designate, because I read it more as like the person doing a bullying investigation. That's how I read that. So...
So the school adjustment counselors are the ones who do the investigations in all of our schools.
Okay, so that's different. So then, I guess my other question, because again, like, social work, high SEL, this is what we talk about all day long. How can we, because not every teacher gets trained in social emotional learning. And so this is a very specific type of position that I think is greatly needed, right? How do we infuse SEL into our math, into our history? We've talked about this ad nauseam, right? How do we make sure that the person that we bring on, or the three, or four, or five people we bring on, are actually trained in doing that work? They may be able to put that on a resume, like, yeah, we did SEL activities, but that might just look like morning meeting in their classroom. How, I think when we're hiring for that position, we have to be very, very clear on what that background has looked like.
And we have some, we have amazing teachers who do amazing, amazing SEL work in all of our classrooms. Again, I'm a social worker like you. Having someone who's been in front of students in the classroom capacity, I think they'd be a better coach and a support for them. So I think, I agree with you on that, but I see this being a super amazing position.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to having it be a teacher, now that I'm understanding what you're saying. The bullying thing had gotten me a little bit, but now I'm understanding that a little bit differently. I just want to make sure that whoever we're bringing in truly has that experience that can bridge, because you're really talking about somebody that's going to bridge those two worlds, that never should have been siloed in the first place. And it's not just our district that has siloed them. Everybody has siloed them. But if we can bridge those, we make sure that we have somebody that's really invested, that really understands what we're doing, and are going to be in good shape. But I do agree that we have to look at what the hours are, and what's the availability, what are those folks look like. And with that, I yield.
Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
The, none of the required qualifications indicate you need a teaching license here. The other question I would have for Mr. Coogan, our superintendent, so it's almost like this, I'm looking at this as like a department head of SEL in some ways. How many days a year do the department heads currently work?
Department heads are 205.
205. And this would be, if we don't act on this, it'll be 183.
Correct.
This is the, this is the kind of points we are making, why we need to, you know, asking questions and trying to get it right is not necessarily a bad thing. And I think that we can, my recommendation would be to make a motion to approve this position, and the terms of employment leave as, for the superintendent to do a little more work on coming back with a, taking our feedback and coming back with a recommendation. So I don't want to vote against it, because I'm a big proponent of it, but I think I raised some valid points, and I think we need a second look at that particular piece, but let's approve the rest of it, and then come back to us with any changes would be my recommendation. I'll make that in form of a motion.
I have a motion to approve item number five contingent on review by the superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to second. Deb, please call a roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
If I could just get some clarification. We posted it as length of year, salary, hours, benefits, et cetera, as negotiated per the FREA contract. So if we're saying that this is not going to be an FREA teacher position as it was intended, we're going to have to post it again as an SNON.
Are we filling it? I mean...
Please?
Are we filling this? Like, when you say it's posted, like, what does that mean? Because we're just approving it today.
Well, right. So if we're going to, so you're saying we need to create a new job description, change the terms. Is that what the committee is asking us for us to post?
Yeah. So my recommendation would be we approve the job description, and my motion was to take out the terms of employment regarding pigeonholing ourselves into one of those things. So we can apply for the position, so people can apply for the position, and then this is going to be open, so that we can get some feedback to say, maybe the 205 makes more sense. Maybe an SNON to start off with, like, we've done pilots for certain other positions. Maybe that helps us, you know. But I wouldn't want you to not advertise, but the terms just need to be taken out, because we didn't agree to those, I don't, I don't believe.
Yeah, the SNON's a good idea.
Do you think they need to?
No?
Right. It's just, do you...
Item number 12.6 is discussion and vote to approve the CTE co-op job description as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Cynthia Sylvia, CTE Director. Go ahead, Ms. Sylvia, please.
So the co-op coordinator position is a position that was, which was in the budget in the spring when we went over the budget and it was approved. If we're going to grow as a CTE program, we need to have a co-op coordinator. We need to have our kids out in the community, out in these businesses, working in unpaid internships, paid co-op positions, just like every other regional vocational school that has a co-op coordinator. Also, with being career and college ready, this co-op coordinator also can, also works with our guidance department, with our articulation agreements, so that our kids can figure out what pathways is necessary when it comes to both college and career opportunities. And, you know, our schedule is a little tricky, but I think we can get our kids out in employment now. Let's get our 12th graders out there. Let's get our kids working and getting everything that they deserve within their pathways. And with earlier, the CTE Capital Skills Grant is going to make our kids even more marketable when they get those certifications in the laborers' union. So I think it's imperative, as we grow as a CTE program, that a co-op coordinator slash intern placement person be in place to get our kids out there and get, you know, get on site. There's a whole, there's a whole process that goes with that, so.
Any, Mr. Aguirre?
I totally agree with everything you just said, 100%. I think that you're doing a nice job, in my opinion, based on every interaction we've had. You've picked up things that we haven't done in this district for years. I think we're definitely on the right track. The only thing I would suggest relative to this same exact thing is the comments we just had about the prior job description, is I think pigeonholing yourself to say the salary, length of work year, and hours and benefits through the FREA contract is not going to be helpful to some of the things that you need. You need a person to do all of those things that you just suggested, with no restrictions, no conflicts, no, you know.
I concur.
You're the director, and you want to say to the person, I want you to go out there and pound the flesh, night times, after hours, this, that, get these kids working, get them... I get it. I 100% agree.
Some is a key point for a co-op coordinator, for sure.
Yeah. So my only comment would be that I think we should take out the terms of employment again, and come up with a better plan of how this is going to be. A coordinator is almost like a coordinator. They're coordinating things. They're not necessarily teaching. It could be a qualification to say they might have had, needed some experience in that. But as you know from the vocational, it's not like a regular teaching license, and there's different things.
Correct. A guidance license would also be appropriate for that position.
Right. But if we have a guidance license, the guidance is in the Administrators Union. So now it gets into like, where do we put these things? So my goal with this would be to give you no restrictions whatsoever, to go find the best person that's going to do what you need to do, and give them the go-ahead. The way these things are drafted, they're binding us a little bit. And I'd rather do, say it now than have you go, and then you come back to us and say, by the way, we can't do this. I need to give this person 20 hours overtime, because they, the times that they're needed and are, you know, like, without the flexibility. So that's my only comment, but I 100% agree with what you're saying, what you're doing, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I yield.
Okay. So, Mr. Aguirre, is that, is that in the, would you like to offer an amendment that strikes that last line, so they can go out and look for what they want, and come to us and tell us how they want to structure it? Or would you just let it go as is?
My, for what it's worth, I'm only one member. I'm only trying to bring up things that are, you know, so I just think to get the best, we've done this with other positions. We tried to say, for the first shot at it, we usually go out for a non-union contract for that first year, feel out, see how it's going. And then we see the needs and how they're going. I think what happens is we put these things in these contracts and say, we're going to do it with the, and nothing against the FREA, but they got 900 teachers that they deal with, or whatever. But this is something that we need to, it's new. I want to give you the flexibility. I want to get the best person. Then at that time, if they want to join the union, then we figure out where it goes, how many days and that. So I would recommend taking that out, give you the top notch. What if your best candidate that you wanted totally didn't have one of these qualifications or something, but they're awesome and they could make a difference for our kids? If we don't do this and leave it open, you might not be able to hire that individual, that's my only point. Secondly, my other question on there was, what does it pay? Because we, usually when we have these things and we're gonna go out, we have a range. So we have a certain number that, as we're advertising. When we say it's in the FREA to be negotiated, well, we can't advertise, we gotta, like, to me, it should be a range put out that you think is gonna get the best candidate and then, you know, we go through it like that and I, I don't think there's anything wrong with just stepping back a little bit, support the initiative, but maybe we don't deal with the, uh, union piece at the present time. I yield.
Okay, my, my only concern is it was in the budget as a teaching position, so as they said, it was in the budget, I asked the superintendent, so, um, why don't we amend it as you suggested and take out those, uh, the FREA piece and let them come back to us with, as you said, either an administrative thing or an S non for a year and let's see where we go?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I got, we have a motion to amend, um, the CTE co-op job description to remove the FREA reference and let it get switched to an S non position and give them one year of that to see how it is. I have a motion by Ms. Agia, a second by Mr. Hart. Deb, please call the roll to approve it as amended. I mean, let's, on the amendment first, I'm sorry.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now on the, the vote to approve the job description, um, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.7 is a discussion and vote to approve the South Coast Educational Collaborative Capital Reserve Fund as presented by Superintendent.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion on the fund? Hearing none, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Hold on a minute, can you serve on that?
No.
12.8 is discussion and vote to approve the rental of the CUS auditorium on Sundays for the Calvary Ministry of the Assemblies of God as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Pacheco.
So, um, each of the, every time we really have a rental, um, for religious organization, I bring it to the committee, uh, to take a look at it. We, we're very successful with the two groups that we have, um, no issues. Um, everything runs rather smoothly, this, this would be, uh, CUS. We have one at Morton, we have a, a program at Morton and we also have another, uh, program rental at, um,
Morton?
Henry Lloyd. So this one here would be for CUS. We've sat down with them, uh, as far as price, they know what they're covering, what, what expenses they have. Um, so we just wanted to bring it, uh, for your approval.
Any discussion on the rental, uh, Ms. Agia?
Is it the same as, uh, the terms, the same as Morton?
Yes, it's shorter amount of time, um, but it's, it's just about the same as Morton and Henry Lloyd.
It's relative, like, it's not, like, one, one church is gonna get it cheaper than the other.
No, they're all paying the same price.
The only concern I had was it said two classrooms here.
The others have two classrooms also.
What, what classrooms would that be in?
It would be close, as close to, to, um, the, uh, auditoriums as we can get. And it would just basically be, and it's not used every single week, but it's a CCD kind of class for the kids.
Music room is right near there.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, just that if we make a decision and say they're gonna use two rooms, what are, the poor teacher that's working in there, if they're, or the principal, like, we, they should be having to say, in my opinion, school-based.
They will, yeah, they will.
So that we don't just tell them, oh, those two rooms you're gonna use, like.
We won't dictate that, we'll, we'll try and get them as close as we can for their purposes, um, but we won't, um, we won't.
And the agreement would be that they obviously treat it with respect and don't, you know.
Yes.
Thank you, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.9 is a discussion and vote to approve the 2022 eligibility application to the Community Preservation Committee for the following project, replacement and restoration of the front patio railing system at 417 Rock Street as presented by Ken Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco.
So we've, um, had, um, quite a bit of projects, actually two very successful projects with, uh, using the CPA money to work on the administration building. This is to take care of, um, that front patio railing and depending on the, the pricing and, and funding availability, it would also do the, the old current main entrance area. Um, so that's what this particular piece is for. There's a, uh, one that will follow this, um, for, for another, uh, operation, but this one here is gonna cover those two major portions. The front patio is, uh, is really deteriorating rapidly now, um, so we're concerned with that. And, um, and the front entrance, if funds allow, uh, we'll do some work on that one.
This is just a, uh.
This is eligibility only.
Start to get the ball rolling for you guys, that's all it is.
Yes.
Any further discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 1210 is a discussion and vote to approve the 2022 eligibility application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Same thing, it's just the windows at 417.
So this one here is 78 windows on the building, so this would be to, um, try and, um, do as many windows as we possibly can with the dollar amount that normally would be, um, allowed, um, from the CPA. We've, we've had grants of 220, 240. Um, this project will be much more than, than that, uh, standalone, probably in the 400s. So we'll phase it in, we'll get as much done as we possibly can, we'll probably, if, if it makes it to the next round and we do get a, an award, we'll buy all the windows, um, and then put in, in as many as we possibly can and then ask for another, um, another grant next year.
Again, this is just the first steps.
Exactly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
We already have it.
Oh, we have motions, yeah. Do you wanna call the roll then?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, we have, and for your information, item number 13, we have a number of retirements, resignations, hiring. Um, I'd ask you regretfully, a few death notices. Um, if someone make a motion to accept.
Can I withdraw, sorry, uh, can we withdraw the custodians and vote on that after? Please? Are we on, are we, are you voting to?
Just the notification.
Oh, I thought we were voting all hirings, all together, okay.
Just, uh, just the notification.
I was shutting my laptop, sorry.
That's right.
But when we get to that, Mayor.
We'll, we'll be there, okay.
One question.
Sure, Ms. Agia.
I just, reviewing it, the, um, there was a position, student support specialist at DURFI. Is that the, um, we've changed their names a couple of times, but I thought we were changing those over to, um, the SEL, uh, positions.
If you recall, at that meeting, we agreed that we would have SEL liaisons K to eight and that we would leave the high school as student support specialists.
So it's like, it's like we're, um, replacing an existing one?
Yes, yes.
Like, it's not a new position, it's just replacing one of the four that, thank you, I yield.
Okay. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion for Bobby in a second from Mr. Hart, can we call the roll on that?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Abstain.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roddicks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 14, new business? Number four, I do have one thing that Mr. Agia pointed out. Um, I, I, we will reconstitute the recognition committee because I thought that was something we did at the beginning of the year, but, um, I have two people that volunteered to wanna be honored. If I have a third, I'll put a committee together. Anybody wanna volunteer from up here to be on the recognition?
Can you repeat that? Because we couldn't.
The recognition committee, which is what we did earlier when we honored some of our people at work, um, Mr. Agia has kinda chaired that the last few years. I don't know how that wasn't up and running at the beginning of the year, but I'd like to reconstitute that and get it going. I have two members that did volunteer to do that, Mr. Agia and Ms. Roddicks. I'd like to throw a third on there. Ms. Larrabee volunteered, okay, so we'll put that back in force if you don't mind. So we definitely have our stuff, because the end of the year, we'll be, uh, doing a lot of that stuff and I appreciate you guys stepping forward. Um, do we have a request for executive session?
There would be a need.
There would be a need. Um, do we wanna vote first or do we want you to read it?
I'll read it, I'll read it.
You'll read it first, go ahead.
Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for August 8, 2022 Regular School Committee Meeting. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for August 29, 2022 Special Meeting of the School Committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrators Association as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Fall River School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession represented by the Fall River Educators Association as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Fall River School System represented by the Fall River Federation of Paraprofessionals as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil, civil clerical employees of the Fall River School System represented by the Fall River, uh, Fall River Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government employees, including without limitation, paraprofessionals, parent workers and clerics of the Fall River School System that are paid from federal or state grants and represented by the Fall River Public Schools Government Programs as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety and security employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will then reconvene and may or may not have statements at that time.
Seeing a need for executive session, can I get a motion in a second to go in?
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Deb, call the roll to go into executive session.